Yes.
Here.
Here.
Um, here. Um.
I thought it was.
By the United States of America and to do the right work for which stands one nation under half in this all the routine justice for all.
And why is your tradition safer?
Not more various. Said again, nurturing. Responsible soul.
Very much. We have two two. She is the girl. The agenda. Second. We just got second idea. Further discussion. And not always there was I. Close. So we have to two be before June six twenty twenty two or be any regular executive. Minutes. Motion to approve. Motion by the second is I just about. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those favors say I. I propose. We have two three. Three is spurs. Thank you, sir.
Well, this is a news board one first day with our first day of summer school. Going to thank all of our staff and the leadership of summer school. I think I saw Mr. Paul, we get in the audience tonight, good concern, appreciate your help. A couple of things, as you might expect, the first day of summer school and we're ready to address those going into tomorrow. And I also want to take note that people's summer schools here will be able to think about the start of next school year in a few weeks, July eleventh. It will be a letter that will be sent out to families that will include how to access their student schedules and how to help obtain information about transportation around some of these sorts of things. So look for that email. And then lastly, to the community, the tax incremental district joint committee meeting is taking place at eleven AM. The school district thanks to its partnership with our friends at the village will be a part of that conversation and we'll update the ones the outcomes that we.
Thank you. For members and his members. And two three.
Oh, please. So please call up where is any need to go. How about just like you. I was kind of. Did you hear? So.
Welcome to members. The university go back a little bit, some of us. Okay, so. Um, I would just break this pretty, pretty, uh, brief. There's a lot of news recently about school safety and such that may or may not be required with other districts. Some from one side, one, one thing, some from the other side, one from other. Um, just. Maybe as a district, we kind of spirit what we want as far as what our needs and the needs and requirements are. So I just ask that take into consideration that it will. And maybe that's almost just outside rhetoric that can impact our, our decisions. Um, kind of vice versa. Thank you. Thank you.
Other stuff. All right, and on two four or eight is our personal transactions.
Motion to approve. I'll say that.
Motion by our second is by Adam. Further discussion. I put the none.
Yes.
May I ask a question? I just want to ask a question. Isn't it currently now going to be more secure online? Yes, okay. I knew that we proved it previously. I thought of you. And then. Of course. Thank you. And then we brought motion by Ross, seconded by Adam. Your group personal transactions, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Please. I mean, I choose five, five is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ross, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those favor say aye. 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 Close. During two six, first session. First, we'll start with their many medical reports and education committee in the first term.
Uh, yeah, we met at the. Um, got through a long list in a short amount of time. Curriculum updates, Sarah shared the. Updates to the. The document. I'm sorry. I'm reading. I'm I skipped ahead to the other topic. So she focused on what's coming up for professional development for the faculty and staff. And then we here in summer, we talked a little bit about that. Um, technology updates, she shared that we're looking at really the internet filtering system to where on the. Ability and what we have been told. Now. Equity updates. There was a meeting with the Maya under May to wrap up and talk about end of the year and the recent activities that have been out of that they're going to work on in a FQ type accident to continue. Um, providing more information about what is. What work is going on in that area. Um, academic standards, we looked at the. Updated standards for each area for the year. There weren't any changes for the. We include every year. And we looked at chrome walk purchases and approved which under the vote officially in here. And then a couple of policy updates that'll come back to the full board for global review on July fifth. Verifying the early post secondary. And then we briefly talked about start times as well, just to say that we could kind of wrap up that conversation and given the discussion that we were aware of. That we found we could get with. Back to me. Thank you. Questions for them?
All right. The one behind two fifteen, the referendum survey results have taken percent of school perceptions. Do you know? John Paul here.
Good evening, Dr. DeMese.
Can you hear us okay? Yes, but I think I can hear you twice.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and mute myself over here. Yes, thank you.
Rob.
Oh, now it looks like you might be double muted.
Hi, Rob, you can go ahead and get started, please.
Okay, great. Let me go ahead and share my screen. All right. So first, let me say that I appreciate your flexibility in meeting. You're right, okay. Uh, in meeting virtually tonight. We are in Random Lake, Howard's Grove, Soton, and with you this evening. So we do, uh, we, we are all over tonight. So again, I, I speed, but I, I can't speed that fast. So I appreciate your, your flexibility in virtual. Uh, I believe I've met most of you. For those of you that I haven't, I believe your, your last meeting I was at was your, your last one for your, your formal crew or your, your last crew of board members. And so for those of you that I have not met, I'm Rob Demese with School Perceptions. I serve as the research director here. I was a project lead on your particular project. And this isn't our first. We've done, we've done many of these over the last 20 years. And in those 20 years, our mission has never changed. It's to do three things. It's to help you as educational leaders gather, organize, and use data to make strategic decisions. We were founded in two thousand and two. We have conducted over 10,000 staff, parent, student, and community surveys in that time, spread across about 850 districts, including Mount Horeb a few times in there as well. So tonight I want to go through your background information and review some of your survey content. Certainly, we'll talk about your, your results and analysis. We'll talk a little bit about your administration of the survey as well. And then I will leave some time for wrap up and questions too. So let's launch in with the review of our process. This is important, and I do want to remind you here that your survey, just as it was last time, was initiated via paper survey that was sent to households. Once I got that paper survey, I could either fill out the paper survey to my heart's content and return it directly back to us, not to you. We didn't want you part of that process. That's A, what you pay us to do, and B, in the name of confidentiality, you could use that business reply envelope that was stuffed in the middle and return it to us. Or use the access code that was printed on the front. That was a one-time-use access code, so that once somebody used that code and they hit submit or finish, it was not recyclable. I could not use that survey over and over again, which in a, in a small community like Mount Horeb is extremely important to make sure that nobody can skew your data. So what happened? Well, as you know, your survey was completed in May and June of this year, and your total respondents went up relative to last time. So that's good. You had about a, a 14% increase relative to last time in terms of total respondents. This round, you were a little over 1,600, and you had a 28% response rate, which is outstanding. Typically, anytime I get to type a two in front, that's very good. You were well above that. You blew that out of the waters. Over a quarter of your, of your, of the adults in your community chose to respond, and that's, that's a number that can get researchers salivating. So outstanding job there. Whatever you use to communicate with your community, keep that up. And the benefit that is, excuse me, is your margin of error does get quite tight at about 2.49% or so. I then went into looking at the age of your community, and this is important. I wouldn't be a good research director if I didn't spend more time than I care to admit on the Census Bureau website. And they do, do more than the decennial census that we're all familiar with. They do annual analyses through various geographies that you can disaggregate upon, including districts. So not just municipalities or congressional districts, but, uh, but school districts as well. So what I wanted to do here is compare who took your survey versus what I would expect to see in your community versus the actual proportion of people in your community. So for instance, 18 to 24. It's 1% almost every time. That is not a Mount Horeb thing. That is not a Wisconsin thing. That is a nationwide thing. 18 to 24-year-olds are the least likely to take surveys, and they are also the least likely to show up and vote, which I admit is not a resounding endorsement of 18 to 24-year-olds, but it is reality. They're also the most likely, though, to be off at college. They just graduated. They're, they're sick of school. They don't want to think about school. So nearly all the time, that, that's a 1%, and I can, I can get pretty pumped if I get to type a two in there. So you're pretty much on track. Your 25 to 34-year-olds was almost spot on. 8% of your survey takers fell into that bucket, and a little over 9% of your community is there. And then you take a step up. So if you kind of turn your head and close one eye, you can start to see a bell curve forming here, which is good. That's what I would expect to see. Most of those middle-aged groups between 35 to 54 is prime working age and especially prime parenting age. And I always tell board members, I tell district leaders, that if, if parents and staff members aren't even motivated to take a school-based survey, then nobody is motivated to take a school-based survey. So if there wasn't a little bit of a hump there, I would be more concerned. There is, and so that's good. Your 55 to 64 is pretty close as well, about 10% of your community and about 14% of your survey takers are there. And then your 65-plus is overrepresented. Now, that's very important for the, uh, for the ability to provide you predictive analytics because your 65-plus, unlike your 18 to 24-year-olds, are going to have perfect attendance at, at, at any elections. They, they, they are going to be there. They will let you know what they think. Um, and so I absolutely want to know what they think then on a survey as well. So it's good news in our world to, to be pretty spot on there with your, with your results. We then went into other demographics. We asked about whether somebody's primary residence was in the Mount Horeb area school district. There's about a 90-10 breakdown here. Now, natural question, why would we send this to people who don't live here? It's a valid question. There are three legs to that stool. Obviously, you're not that far away from where I am now on the near east side of Madison. It's very commutable. There's no reason why a staff member would need to live in Mount Horeb, and nor are they required to. But they do have an email address, so they will get the survey. Parents who chose to open and roll into the district, by definition, don't live there or they wouldn't have to open and roll in. And then finally, if I were to have a second home within the district, um, but it's not necessarily my primary residence, I'll get it because I have a mail, uh, I have a mailbox. But the important part for you here is in the, the analyses moving forward, um, where we are looking at a potential election results. We are going to remove the 10% who don't live there and only focus on the 90%, because they are the people that have the ability to control an election within your school district boundaries. We then asked, in which municipality do you live? About six and 10s in the village of Mount Horeb. And then we take a big stair step down into Springdale. Blue Mounds was also included there at 6%. Village of Blue Mounds next at 5%. And then we did capture a few people down there in the town of Moscow and the town of Vermont as well. Obviously, municipality boundaries and your, and boundaries of the district are not contiguous, so you can live within a district or, excuse me, you can live within a municipality, but not necessarily live within a district. So just because I don't live there doesn't mean I'm not necessarily going to be captured here because they are not contiguous. Other demographic information included, are you an employee of the district and do you have children attending a school in the district? What I want to see here is that parents and staff are taking the survey, but I don't want them to be the only people taking the survey because certainly they're not the only part of your community. So about 85, 86% rather of your survey respondents are not employees of the district. And about 37% of your survey respondents do not currently have a kiddo enrolled in Mount Herem, Mount Horeb area schools. If you do have a kiddo in school, where do they go? But 43% said they have a kid at the high school, 37% at the middle school, 33% at the intermediate school, and 25% at the primary center. And then a little bit more, but a stair step down into the early learning center and your 4K facility. Obviously, it is don't add up to 100, nor should they add up to 100%, because I could have more than one child enrolled in a school, enrolled in one school at one time. How do you like to receive school or district information? Now, this is a carefully worded question here. Note that it does not say, how do you receive school information? Because I couldn't receive information in a way that I don't want to receive information. Here it says, how do you want to get it? How would you like to receive communication from your school or, or, or your district? This is in descending order of non-parents, non-staff, which is the lower of the two bars for each set or represented in gray. 64% want to receive school or district info from the Mount Horeb mail. And then we take a step down, school and district newsletters and school and district websites are primarily where your non-parents, non-staff want to receive school or district information. Your parents have a very long bar at emails. They really want to be communicated with via email. But then there's kind of a balance among school and district newsletters, school and district websites, and phone notifications as well. I always tell board members, I always tell district leaders here, you're going to use all of these things anyhow, but it is kind of nice to know, you know, not just throwing something out into ether. If we do communicate in a particular way, what kind of bang for our buck are we getting in terms of our method of communication? We're then back to our blue coloring on the far right-hand side. This is our background information. So I'm going to skip through some of these slides a little bit more quickly because there's nothing new here. There's no data here. This is exactly what was in your survey. So I either retyped what was in your survey or took screenshots in order for this to be a one-stop shop, just like we did in 2017 with you, so that you don't have to dig up an old copy of your survey. You don't have to find something on your counter that has long since been recycled. You can just pull up this report and everything will be there for you. And in the name of transparency, if and when you choose to post this on your website, even if I didn't take the survey, or if I'm new to the community, community, I can still see what was on it. So we talked a little bit about how you were doing financially, your mill rates relative to other Dane County districts. And then we wanted to do some education as well because you could have two of these within your future. Your operational, what does that mean? What type of, what type of referendum is an operational referendum? And what is a capital referendum? And then to contextualize whether or not referendums are common in Wisconsin. Again, nothing new here. This was all in your survey itself. We then talked a little bit about your operational challenges and your base plan. So we noted that the Board of Ed is exploring an operational referendum to increase funding on an ongoing or recurring basis for your most pressing needs, beginning in the 23-24 school year. And primarily, this base plan would include attracting and retaining high-quality staff, maintaining programs and services, and pay for increasing costs such as your transportation, utility, and technology bills. For your base plan, then, the question read as follows. Would you support a projected $4.47 million operational referendum to fund the items identified above, representing an estimated annual tax increase of $55 for every $100,000 of property value every year? And then included the estimations of how you got to that $55. On a scale of definitely yes to definitely no. So what did we see? For this particular question, we are focusing only on residents because, again, they are the ones that get to control an election within the Mount Horeb area school district. For your staff, about nine and 10 or so are supportive of the base plan as it was described. Your parents, about eight and 10, are supportive of the base plan as it was described. For your non-parents, non-staff, about approximately 52% are supportive of the base plan as it was described, and about 28% are saying no. Now, just to back up here, while these slides look the same, behind the scenes, in both your community and any given community, the same number of people that are feeding these are different. So about 1% of any given community is encapsulated right here on this slide. About 1% of any given community are staff members. So very supportive, not that many of them. Parents, caregivers are kind of in the middle. About 25% of any given community will have a kid currently enrolled in one of your schools. And about 75% of your community is included right here on this slide. So whenever you see purple on a screen, put your eyes there first because most of your community is going to fall into the purple bars. Here again, 52% or so are saying yes. So what does that look like then? Same data, same question, but now I'm weighting support based on the proportions that I just told you. So here for the base plan, you're looking at about 50, a 58 to 59% support for the operational base plan for your most pressing needs as it was described in the survey. Obviously, that is above 50% plus one for referendum approval. But as you know, that wasn't the only part of your operational funding options. There were two potential others, one for $350,000 and one for $850,000 respectively, for student academic supports and student support services. So focusing first on student academic supports, the question was very similar. However, it said, would you support expanding the base plan by about $350,000 to maintain student academic supports? And here you would be adding on an additional $20 above the $55 that was previously, thus the word expanding up top here. Same scale, definitely yes to definitely no, same to segregations. So your staff, fairly similar, about eight and 10 said yes to this expansion. Your parents or caregivers, three quarters said yes to expansion. And for your non-parents, non-staff, very similar, approximately 53% or so said yes to the base pan, base plan expansion. What does this look like weighted? The data is very similar. So you're, it's a, it's approximately the same support here, about 58 to 59% are supportive of expanding the base plan for the student academic supports as they were described in the survey. There was one final question. Would you support expanding the base plan referendum by 850,000 to fund the student support services? And here you'd be again adding on another $48, same scale, same groups. Your staff are about seven and 10 for support. Parents and caregivers, approximately 72%. But you see a downward movement here in terms of non-parents, non-staff. Here, this particular group falls below 50% and approximately one-third are saying no to this particular expansion. So when we do wait these appropriately, here you're much, much, much closer, and this particular one, you are within the margin of error. Here you're at 52, 50.2% when we wait the various groups proportionally based on your final, based on your final expansion. Now, we'll have some summary slides at the end, but there are a few other pieces of your survey here, as you know. Facility planning is where your survey went next for the early learning center. So we talked about what some of the needs were at the early learning center. I noted that at this point, the board had developed two options. Option one was closing the early learning center and adding on to the primary center, either onto it or near it. Or option two, the board can decide to renovate and expand the current early learning center, and we noted the cost for each. And the question was, what advice would you give us? Explore option one, option two, either, neither, or I'm not sure. So what, the way this looked is this particular slide includes the options exactly as they were in the survey, exactly what you just saw. But what you're going to see in the next slide to help clarify this a little bit, the option in the middle said, I would support exploring either option. To, so just to help visually kind of see where your support is going. Since these middle people would support either, what I did is I took 30% for instance for your staff, and I added it on to the 42% here for option one, and added the 30% on here for your staff for option two, because this particular group in the, in the middle would support either. So I'm going to take out that middle bar, this middle set of bars, and I'm going to add these respectively onto option one or two. And this is the way that it looks. So again, this doesn't add to 100% on purpose because we just allocated these middle sets. So here I'm looking to see which is higher, which is lower, or where is support going? First thing I noticed is that relatively few people are not supportive of either. It, it, it's not uncommon for any given project, no matter what it is, no matter what the costs are, no matter how it's described. It's not uncommon to see support for no option in the upper teens or somewhere up to a quarter of people saying, no, I don't like anything. Here you're only down to 12%. So my first way, takeaway is that there does appear to be a recognition by your community that something needs to be done with this particular facility. Your staff are leaning towards option one, which, by the way, just as a reminder, is closing the early learning center and adding on to or near the primary center. Your other groups are as tight as they can be. Your parents are separated by one percentage point between option one and option two. Your non-parents, non-staff are just a hair more spread out. Two percentage points separate option one and option two for non-parents, non-staff. So here what I'm seeing is that there's a recognition that there needs to be, something needs to be done, but people are split between one and two. So what do I take away from this here? Well, what this data can't, what, what it can't tell you is how many people you'll peel away from one to the other. So my guess at this point, you've surveyed on this question a couple of times now. My guess is that this group here, virtually in this room, and you physically will have to decide what, what option you want to move forward with. Because now, two times in a row, the data has been very, very tight. I, I don't expect if you were to do this a third time and investigate, it's probably not going to change very much. So my recommendation here is you're probably going to have to go with one of the options and, and probably the one that's slightly more supported perhaps by your parents and non-parents, non-staff. But this isn't the only facility option that you potentially have on the table as well. So one of the difficult decisions, I think, for, for the members of this group is which one do we kind of want to pull the plug on and which one do we want to roll with? Here in this case, my guess, and this is a bit of speculation, but my guess is that most people will probably not have a thick line in the sand. You know, if, if one of your options here was build a new elementary school or, or tear down a beloved school built in 1920, that three generations, you don't, three generations of grandparents have went through, well, then you, you know, then you might have a little bit more decisions that you need to make. Here, it's a fairly small group of, of, of people that it's affecting, and it's a fairly small group of, of parents themselves. I mean, there's only a, a fairly small group of kids here. So my guess is that you're probably going to have to roll forward with something. And my guess is that people aren't going to be super fussy in which way you go, but you'll probably just have to make a decision amongst this group which direction you want to go. We did have other facility, uh, other facility questions. So in addition to the early learning center, we have identified other facility challenges. And the question read, for each particular facility, what priority would you place in the following blank project? So intermediate, high school, your, your brackets here were filled in, were filled in with the particular building. And the scale that people answered upon was high to low. So if I answered high, behind the scenes, my score was weighted as a three, which is defined as address immediately. If I said something was a medium priority, that was weighted behind the scenes as a two, and that is defined as, sure, it's important, but address it in a future project. Low is behind the scenes, one, it's not a priority, and do not address in the near future. So what did we see? In terms of the primary center, people are a fan of the IT center not flooding, so that, that's good news. Relocating the district's technical. Relocating the district's technology or data center out of the basement of the primary center was by far the biggest priority at, at this particular facility at a score of 2.43. That's pretty high in terms of scores. Anytime I see a number that's 23, 24, 25 something, that's pretty high priority in the scheme of things, especially as a, as a, as a perfect score being a three in terms of high priority. What I'm seeing then right around exactly in the middle is repairing floors as needed. That was right around the medium priority level. And then what fell below two, slightly below medium was replacing the playground equipment and repairing surrounding surfaces and repairing the building's exterior. For your intermediate center, you also had one here that stuck out a little bit. Also one that was relatively high at a score of 2.41 for updating major building systems and software controls. The remainder then of the, of the particular projects at this building all fell below medium. All fell below two at 1.94, 1.88, 1.79 and 1.56 respectively. For creating additional space for confidential family school meetings. Replacing carpeting and floors, replacing playground equipment and reducing your noise levels and improving acoustics. Here you were a bit more balanced at the middle school, so you did have several here, including one that was well above two. Which was adding classrooms to address current capacity challenges and provide space for projected growth at a 2.38 score. And then slightly behind did a score of 2.30 was replacing windows and door frames. You had two projects that were 2.25 for expanding space for music and renovating the CTE area. And then one more that was above medium at 2.10 for updating restrooms. One smack dab right in the middle at 2.0 at a medium priority for expanding the cafeteria. And then one below two at 1.87 for creating additional space for confidential family school meetings. Last but not least, your high school. Here I would say too, you had one that was a bit dominant relative to other high school projects at a score of 2.17. Exploring a partnership with the village to build an indoor pool for school and community use. One that hovered right around, right around medium priority for adding a gym or field house space. And then the remainder four projects all fell below two. For updating the track, expanding the theater, renovating the stage and backstage areas and updating the outdoor athletic areas. Putting these all together then, what I said is regardless of building, what are our top priority scores? And he's, here are your top 10. The overall, the highest priority score was at the primary center for relocating the district's technology center out of the basement. The second highest at the intermediate center was updating major building systems and software controls. Third highest, in fact, then you had a fairly strong chunk of, of projects here in the middle that were all at the middle school. Adding classrooms for growth, replacing windows and door frames, adding space for music and renovating, expanding the CTE space. The high school, they had the, what am I at? 10, 9, 8, 7, 7th highest priority for the pool. Updating restrooms again at the middle school. And then right around medium was adding gym and field house space and repairing floors as needed. So this is your top 10, irrespective of building. For your bottom 10 priorities, or in other words, where people are saying that the projects aren't necessarily garnering higher priority. Your intermediate center for acoustics. A chunk of high school projects for the outdoor athletic areas, the stage and backstage and the theater. The intermediate center for the playground equipment, high school again for the track. Middle school for your student service offices. Two at the intermediate center for replacing carpeting and floors and creating additional space for family school meetings. And then finally, the primary center for replacing playground equipment and repairing surrounding surfaces. So all in all then, what did we learn? So what did we learn respective to operations areas of your survey? The base plan to fund the operational needs of the district was supported by a majority of the three key subgroups. Respondents expressed less support to expand the base plan. Particularly with regard to including additional funding for student support services. That was the one where you did take quite a step down and the one that was within the margin of error at right around 50%. With regard to facilities, respondents are very closely split between the two ELC options. Relatively few respondents, however, do not support either option. Looking ahead then for your work over the next couple of weeks and months. Based on the priority scores that you see here, including some that were well above two. There is justification to form a facility steering committee to study three primary questions. A, what projects should be included in a capital plan? B, what will those projects cost? And C, when should a potential capital referendum take place? And the when, I think is something that a lot of districts are struggling with. And, and I think my best answer to that is you need to go when people are ready to go. People need time to digest these things. You know, whether or not something is better to go in November versus April versus a later date. You know, you could talk endlessly about what is the relationship with turnout in relation to referendum approval or opposition. You could talk about inflationary costs and those are important conversations. But I would say all of those take a backseat to people need time to digest what the first two questions are and what the answers to those are before they're able to make a decision. Because if people don't know what the projects are going to be, and if people don't know what they're going to cost. Then they're most likely to tell you no. Very, very few people are going to say, I'm not sure what they're doing, but I am willing to give them more money. That's, that's not how the game works. For the most part, people need to have a clear understanding of what are you going to do? What buildings are those that are going to take place at? Why are those needed? Why are those projects needed? And how much money is going to leave my wallet? Before, before those projects come to fruition. And it's a pretty tight timeline. I believe it's August 30th of this year. That you would need to have something signed, sealed and delivered to get on the ballot for November, regardless of operations or capital. So I would say here in the scheme of things, you're probably better placed for April than you are for November. Obviously I have one voice, I can't make that decision for you. But I would say that people do need time to digest this. Obviously this is a bit of fire hose drinking, I think for the people in this room. And it'll be even more so for somebody who never thinks about what you're doing in your facilities and somebody who never pays attention to the school board. So let me pause there. I'll take a swig of water and then I'll do my best to try to catch you here. And I might need some help from you, Steve, just to catch the questions.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Could you repeat that? I heard operations and I heard 350 and I heard 850, but that was about it. No, I'm sorry. I just hear ringing.
Can you mute your microphone? And then we'll repeat the question. There we go.
On slide 46. You summarized what we learned about the operations referendum question. And you said the base plan was supported by a majority of the three subgroups. But that the two supplemental pieces, two academic support and student support services were less so, which is accurate. But that first one, the student academic support is a difference of 58.8 and 58.5. So in my mind, that's nearly the same as base plan. So my takeaway would be that those two pieces could be important, but not that last piece. And I guess your thoughts?
Yeah, overall I agree. I would say that the takeaway there is that in essence, money is, is what matters. So the more expensive you get, the less support you're going to get. So the more expansions you do, the, the less support you're going to get. So I would say, yes, I agree, your base plan is supported and you're right, the very same or very similar data about 58, 59%. You also saw a very similar support for that for the cheaper of the two base plan expansions. So yes, I would say that if you were to, if you were to take an operational referendum forward. Your respondents are telling you that they have appetite for the base plan and the first expansion, the cheaper of the two, but not the 850. Or if it is, it's very, 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 very close and within the margin of error. But the, the second bullet point here is really getting to the point where the more expensive you get, the less support you're going to see.
Other questions?
I have one. It seemed like this was the case when you were going through the introduction of how many respondents from what groups. But in terms of our population, our makeup, is there enough non-parent representation in there that we feel good that the survey results are predictive of what?
Yeah, I do. And it's a very good question. And the reason I say that is because your response rate is already so high. And what we find that the pool of people that are willing to take surveys have a very large overlap with the pool of people that show up and vote. That middle, that Venn diagram is really quite wide. And the people that take surveys are also the people that fashion themselves to be the influentials in the community. And usually are the people that, that bring along several votes along with them. They are the people that are hanging around in the vestibules of your buildings before and after school. They are the people that are shaking every hand and walking up and down the rope lines of all your football games. So it is a good question, but I do feel that with, with the high response rate that you have, even though you have more parents. That response rate is really going to help you out with, with being productive here.
Well, this is all very interesting. Thank you, Rob. A great job as usual. I think one, one thing that's important to realize about surveys like this, they are snapshots. They only capture a moment in time. And I think when it comes to financial issues, we have to be really, really thoughtful. About what's going on in the economy. And not just sort of generally, but, but because we have 75% of our residents in the district and 75% respondents to the survey. We don't have a kid in school, a lot of whom are on the fixed income. And at some point it becomes a sensitivity analysis. So how high do gas prices have to go before a respondent who is supporting both the base plan and the plan that Jessica mentioned? How high does gas have to go for their response to a, to a no? And that's a really tricky thing. And, and so I just think we have to be, I think we have to be really, really thoughtful about that, understanding that the people, I think in the community are of all kinds are beginning to really feel pain with gas at $5. I don't know what gas was at when, when the survey came out of the field and that it wasn't $5, but it's something that we're going to have to, something we're going to have to think about.
I, I agree and it's a really good point. And what I would tack onto that too is as you decide what you want to do when is people are only willing to see a certain amount of dollars leave their wallet. And how much you want to see used for your operations side of things versus how much you want to see for your facility side of things. You'll also have to balance how much money am I as a taxpayer going to see leave my wallet? And how much of those are going towards operations and how much to facilities? Because there is a, there is a cap there. So you'll have to decide how you want to weigh those two competing interests.
And I just also made the, made the point that when we, when we start thinking about this. The reality is what people perceive it to be. That is, that is, you know, $55 per 100,000. May not look or feel like a lot, but six months it might, it might be different. And it only might be different because it's the, it's the icing on the cake. Where people say, I've had enough. Not, not necessarily about public education in the community, they just can't take anymore. They can't take anymore of, of what's going on in the economy. So I think, I think that's another thing.
Yeah, it's, I agree again. And we've seen that borne out in a lot of our surveys this spring where people feel really positive about the district. And they, and they, they have no ill will. You know, they have nothing bad to say and we can see that they, you know, they just say, I can't afford it right now. You know, it's not that I don't like what you're doing. It's not that I don't like it. I just, I also have to buy groceries and I have to put gas in the car and it's, again, it's a competing interest.
Of course, partially or, or because this was created or I was on the survey was that it was for the person. The, the focus on the two options. Where do we come to, I really have to do something about ELC and that's the genesis of this, but where do we come up with only those two options? But still on the table potentially. And that's a more question and Rob, if you can talk a little bit to, I know there's low numbers or I support either option, but people aren't going to necessarily say that because they'll want to indicate that they want to do something. What I took out of this is, yes, we understand this is an issue. Yes, we want to move forward. I'm not talking about either of these two options, but I want to indicate that I want to do something for the district.
Yeah. So I think if I'm understanding correct, I heard it, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding right. In, in terms of these options, I think what's interesting is that the higher, the, for the exception of your staff. You know, there seems to be some flexibility here in terms of which way people can go. And you know, the, the bars in the middle here for I would support either option are pretty comparable, again with the exception of staff, to option one or option two. The, the hard part, and this is kind of looking behind the curtain is of this 25% right here that run option one. Could they come over to option two? Or are they really, really going to put a thick line in the sand to say, nope, I will only go for adding on or closing the primary center? My guess is that some of that will have some clarity when people actually see what the actual number is and how much money again is going to leave their wallet to support one of these two options. But usually for these buildings that serve the lowest grades, people are, I don't want to say they're less passionate because it is important. And that early childhood is extremely important, but it just, it doesn't have the history. It doesn't have kind of the, you know, the, the football field is next to the, the high school. And, and most of the identity building goes on around the high school. And four years are spent there as opposed to, but just, just a year or two in this particular building. So my guess is that people aren't going to be too locked into one or the other, especially by how many people are willing to support either.
If I remember wrong here, you could only pick one of those options. I can't recall. I only call it three.
That's right. It was once because we included the either option. So we didn't want to have people choose one and either necessarily. In order to provide you some clarity, we wanted, well, the intention was provide you some clarity, I guess. Mixed opinion is also clarity, but we wanted people to choose ones to try to push them in one direction or the other. That's right. It is also kind of a safeguard when we tried to do mark more as one, sometimes people will say neither, I'm not sure, and option one, because they don't read it very closely. And then, and then what do you do with that data? So it does make it a little bit cleaner to do a mark as one.
So another question that I had on the priorities listing. Does not disaggregate that data and can you provide a reason why?
Yeah, that is a really good question. This wasn't necessarily at the point where you were taking a package of products to referendum yet. So here, even if I wasn't necessarily a voting member of your community. If I'm a high school science teacher who's been in the decade for four districts, I have a lot of pull in terms of whether I think I'm going to try to convince somebody is a high priority project or not. So here, because there's not necessarily a referendum question on the table yet. And because you're not ready for that yet and you don't have a tax impact attached to any of these. The influence is a little bit more balanced regardless of whether or not I have residency within the district itself. Now, could you disaggregate it that way? Sure. But here influence isn't just settled on a voting member of a community. It's a little bit of a wider net. So that was an intentional use to put top 10 priorities together for all respondents as opposed to just residents.
So Dr. Slerman, would you? I don't, I'm not even sure what the logistics would look like, but the, the question is the same regardless of logistics. And that is, would you envision doing another survey after the facilities committee was, was completed with their work? And we can do some sensitivity analysis and all that kind of great stuff?
I agree. Welcome back.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you.
I know a guy.
I know a good guy.
About the survey itself, like you have the comments as well, are those, that's something, Rob, like you have read and saw any news that you found? Or is that just?
Yeah, it's, it's a really good question, and we did, and I did talk about that with Dr. Salerno. So he has access to all of them to go through, and I did read through them. And you know, I, I guess they're interesting for what people chose to talk about and not talk about. But I would say your survey especially, there seem to be, while the comments were valuable, quite tangential sometimes to what the purpose of the survey was. And I will say that when there's an open box, people will talk about what they choose to talk about regardless of it has anything to do with operations cost or facility cost. So yes, they're there, yes, they're available. And I think they're, they're maybe worthwhile to look at, but I wouldn't maybe open your week with them. I don't think I would start looking at comments at 8:00 AM on a Monday. You know, maybe put your feet up at 6:00 PM on a Friday and look at them. But regardless of, of the comments or not, you know, people do take the time to, to, to type them out. So I don't want to shortchange the value of them. But I would say that they're very difficult to make decisions on, and I push all boards to, to make your decisions off the quantitative data. Because everybody who chooses to take the survey answers these questions. But people don't shrug their shoulders and leave a comment. So what you're left with are very passionate people on one side or the other. So, you know, as an example, if somebody's going to say, I'm going to support every project, go for it all, it's time we, you know, we, we should, we should build a new school. And the next person's going to say, free has always been too expensive, and I won't support anything you ever do, ever, you know? And what do you do with that data? So I would say, go ahead and take a look at them, but I'm not sure that they're going to provide more clarifying data than what you see in the quantitative data here.
Rob, thank you very much for being a part of this and going through this journey with us. We really appreciate your feedback and expertise. And we learned you're a survey developer, but also. So thank you very much.
Of course, and Stephen's got know how to find me for better or worse. They know where I am and they know where I work. So if you do have some questions and you want to let it sit for a few minutes, or if you do have questions as your, as your facility group gets going, by all means, let me know. I'd be happy to help. Thank you, take care, have a good night.
Consideration to be ranked as superintendent to.
Motion approved. So Dr. Salerno, would this, the charge be largely the same as the charge that we put to the community in 2017?
Or is the mixture in my vision suggests that this would be a group of people that are representative of the entire community? Businesses as well as families, as well as those who don't have. The scope of their work really being down to making a recommendation to the board for their consideration. Or if the judge capital refer. And that the results of this survey kind of serve as the means in terms of what is to be considered and what wouldn't be considered. Otherwise, I think we go outside the scope of what we've been doing.
And did we get any, any names during the survey?
Yes, I received about 15, 16 people. And I reached out to this, this might be a consideration. That over, that might be named, that maybe tomorrow. I remember that, yeah. From Gray Architects, that's fantastic job. From what I understand, that in 2015 facilitated a conversation, brought some consensus for the whole. We tested those questions.
So, so one thing, Dr. Salerno, that I would, I, I understand that we, and I agree. Pretty quickly, but you know, and there's another part of the equation, and that is, you know, if they really feel, if their work compels them to feel really strongly about, you know, one thing, then we gotta, I think we have to listen to that. You know, and even if it's a couple of things that maybe you looked or, you know, has, has come up or whatever it is. So Dr. Salerno, as, as more, you know, like Rob mentioned, the timing of everything, you know, whatever we think. This steering committee and then two.
We might preference to allow for a little bit of a launching pad for God, David, Matt, himself to get the facilities steering committee off the ground. And then three people in September. People trying to get them over the summer might be a hardship. And then we know that there's some requirements for us if we're going to do an April referendum. If that's the consensus of the board, that you have to back that up at least 60 to 75 days to get your question in place. So that tells you how much time you have between September and all February first for that team to do their work. And April referendum would not cost the district anything because there's a Wisconsin Supreme Court candidate, candidate election taking place at that time. If we were to try to do something in the summer of 2023, that likely would cost us something, as would be the November final election. If there's no presidential election in 2023. So that gives you some context, there's some work to be done, hopefully as much as there was in 2015.
So that's 75 days is the timeline.
At the top of my head, I'm just thinking somewhere in there, 60 to 75 days ahead of the board, we need to come up with the actual number of questions.
I'm just doing the math because it's August, so Jamie.
Thank you. With an operational referendum, you probably noticed on the future agenda items that I've suggested that the board consider language if there are a search meeting, if they're looking to do something for a local government meeting. We need to work with Corals and Gray, which is our bond attorneys, to help us shape the question in a way that's reflective of what we. So just to follow up a little bit on the questions trying to articulate better, but if you keep up in terms of this steering committee. Yeah, the ELC is obviously something that has to be addressed. Would we limit the steering committee to just those two options? Or can we give them a little bit more latitude to say, if you don't, if you say you don't want to do the current ELC, what is your alternative as you look at the simplest lives in the district and come up with a recommendation? Yeah, there might have been something that we just didn't think about, right? When we, when we raised the question on the survey, and might there be something that is do it innovative that would be more than considering? Ultimately, I do don't want them to get beyond the goal of making a recommendation that the board consult. I think that's a decision board, but I think your point's so well made, there might be things, a lot of right people could be part of that committee. So would it be great to get their view?
The one thing, if there's all two times now, very split, unless they have sort of innovative.
I guess partly because I don't, I don't want it, if this has been, the shoe is stable, I don't want to understand that. The flip side is that that's not what I hear necessarily. And I read these results more as met for the two choices. We realize we need to do something, but is that where people want to invest their money? And this is where I go back, because I wasn't familiar with the word, in terms of how that was framed up originally, what are the options to consider? What might have been moved out? So I don't want to go back and reverse work this, but I just want to break that point. Could be considered an alternative, alternative. If that facilities steering committee says, we don't want to put money into the ELC. Yes. I'm sorry, I can't understand. I, I just feel like if one of those alternatives is to raise the PC, they think that that's beyond the scope of the community survey. There's very little options in my mind, but I've been wrong before, so I saw from hearing those ideas. There's some work that needs to be done to the PC, but that includes being a brick and mortar on the outside. Some of that flooring is a concern, but in terms of doing something differently, I think people were thinking just trying to make one building together brand new. I don't see that.
I think, or, you know, Rob's comment earlier, if there's an operational referendum, then you can go for facilities, capital, or path to that. It just kind of needs to compound that hour around figuring out things from the public to provide to the school, so.
Absolutely, I guess my, my take is, we're talking big money either way that we do that. And so I, I just, I worry that when you're making that investment, you want to make sure that it's the best investment. I know that things have folded over the last 10 years to since Thomas track. Those, that looks like kind of the obvious choice out of it. I just don't want to move out other alternatives. If you're going to spend that much money, let's make sure that people are really excited about how we're spending that money. And then if it long term needs the district, not just a one for one exchange of school and for school.
And I agree, yeah, but I would say if, if the facts that the situation ends up on the other side of the coin, we're gonna have to make a decision. Ultimately, it will be ours at any, at any rate, yeah. And so I think we have to, we have to be ready.
Thanks, and motion on the table, motion for the round second to digest that further discussion. Are there none, all those who favors the eye?
Aye.
Thanks, and then to Sunday, consideration of 2021, 2022, other revisions.
You may recognize this document, the format of it, it's a format that we've used for many, many years. It's a format that's required by state statute or anytime a public school district wants to revise a budget. Thank you finance committee members, last Monday, we spoke close to an hour, I think, just on, on this item. So appreciate the conversation. There's four tables in this document, and you may recall our accounting system is based on a variety of different funds. Department of Public Instruction defines what those funds are, and then we're responsible for managing those funds. So the first table at the top is our general fund, you may recall that as our general operating fund. I always use the phrase, it keeps our lights on, so to speak, the vast majority of our business activities. When we get to June, the end of our fiscal year, we're typically looking at any minor modifications that may have to play some role later in spring. And this gives us an opportunity to do that. So it's that, that at this point, again, we're not looking to make modifications, how utilizing our dollars is just reflecting changes primarily wholesale, federal funding. We need to account for that accordingly. The most noteworthy piece, I think, or the general fund revisions, is that we're looking at a projected net income balance of just over $42,000 increase. The purpose of that is we received in the spring some federal dollars that was transmitted through the state called the Get Kids Ahead Initiative as a mental health program. Again, we received just under $42,000 for that. Amount of money is something that the district needs to sit down and create a plan for how we want to utilize those dollars. And not just use them the last couple of months of this, that's why I make sure we do this. You may recall that back in the winter, when we reviewed the revisions, we also had the governor's coronavirus relief fund amounted in just over $320,000. We will also be utilizing those dollars next fiscal year. And so the governor's coronavirus relief fund and the Get Kids Ahead Initiative fund are two items that will increase our fund balance for the year. Meaning we received the funds, and now we're getting ready to create a lot of funds. That will be reflected in the 2023. So it's important for us that when we anticipate that we have specific uses for funds, and we're going to use them wisely, when we're ready to use them, then we account for it in our budget as an increase in fund balance. Only to that, on utilization of those funds, we'll see a decrease in our fund balance. And that will show then we use those funds. The next table down is a special education fund, a little bit smaller activity. We had some modifications made at both revenue expenditures. On the revenue side of the house, it's not a case mostly federal funding. And then on the instruction side of the house, headaches and changes in personnel costs. Overall, it's important, and again, special education design area. The food service table is next. We've talked about this a few times at the board level and talked about it quite a bit over the last couple of years, the finance level. And it has to do with how our food service programs have been funded over the last few years, most notably during and shortly after the pandemic. You may recall the federal government provided a free, both free reimbursable rate on all lunches that were given during the pandemic and now served during the stretch. We anticipate that next year, we will go back to pre-pandemic stage where families will be making events. I think not historically for buying this. So the purpose of the revisions here is going to account for the significant increases that we've seen in federal funding for school lunches. And obviously on the expenditure side, it's just simply increased house and food. I'm anticipating an increase in fund balance for food service. We have some claims or any that were finishing up in the fiscal year, yes, and voice of that we're taking care of. This shows a zero increase in fund balance because it's requiring a balanced budget. And with the last, I would anticipate because of that increase in federal funding, we'll see an increase in fund balance for food services, which is wonderful. I will also point out, as we spoke about last week at finance, we're very fortunate that we've been able to make positive fund balance even through the valid zone funding that we experienced primarily March through June 2020. And then lastly, lastly, the last table called other package and collaborative program. Primarily, we had just a $1,490 modification in our vocational head grant. And I want to recognize our vocational programs that have been so nice. So we help manage this program. It's, it's a, if you've ever heard of the health program, the program is what that vocational program is. So nothing changes in terms of funding, just a slight modification, I'm sure, for a piece of equipment that the, that the middle school and high school purchase. Questions? Thank you for listening.
I'm really, I'd like to, Rod, further discussion? Are there none, all those who favors the eye?
Aye.
Thanks, guys. All right, new year's consideration of plan purchase for the 2022, 2023.
It's, these are plan purchases, as Professor Mottner said, we already helped us get started with the consular. H should come back on June 6th, yes, for consideration.
Motion approved.
Welcome, Rob, second to Jessica, further discussion? Are there none? All those who favor say aye. Post? Question carries. All right, moving on to eight, eight is the comments. The comments. Future agenda items, I don't like to do this, but as always, if you have anything you'd like to get on the agenda. Moving on to ten, which is our schedule of next weeks.
Just to make note quickly, traditionally, on Monday evening would happen on July fourth. But then we're asking if we could move that meeting to Tuesday, July fifth. And then please note that the finance committee, you remember, the finance committee are aware we're getting ready to prepare for our audit. Typically, then we meet a week after, so that will be happening on July the eighteenth at five thirty PM. That meeting will actually take place at the district office, usually virtually, but that meeting will be in person. At six PM, we have CFP Wellness Day meeting, at seven PM, we have a regular. A few changes for the month of July, thank you for your questions.
All right, moving on to eleven, moving to our executive session. So translated to post-session, perfection nineteen twenty-five. Third one, the third receipt, considering climate promotion, application of the part of the evaluation data, and politically, the relationship of body, master, gen, how much, um, be deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public property, investing public funds, or conducting other self-funded public business. Whenever, but out of competitive or marketing reasons for prior a full session, this will be a one off of, I'll start. One of our, I can advise you.
Yeah, thank you.
This will be one off, so Jessica, Dan, Rob?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, yeah.
Yes.
And so, yes.